September twenty six. We are in the Mayorville Comfort Executive Boardroom, First Floor, Manning Tower, forty five Barton Road, Dr. Matt, open three oh one. This is a public hearing, notice has been posted in City Hall and on our website. And all else are welcome to attend. Some members are present, the rest are on Zoom. I'm gonna do a roll call for four of them. Taylor Harris?
Present.
Carol Roberts, treasurer?
President.
Janet Kraft, member?
Here.
Rena Pettiford, vice chair. Committee of six in the hospital. Timothy J. Sullivan, chair, president. We are the board of directors of the Brockton Housing Authority. This is our regular session. Please note that all Brockton Housing Authority meetings are recorded. I'm gonna read off the governor's memo, COVID nineteen, due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic and state of emergency. On March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending current provisions of the open meeting law. General law chapter thirty eight, section twenty. For so long to the audit, public parties are temporarily relieved from the open meeting law requirements that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public. The longest measures are taken to ensure proper access to the body's deliberations through adequate and alternative means. That was extended to April first, twenty twenty one, extended again to April first, twenty twenty two, extended again to July first, twenty twenty two, extended again July fifteenth, twenty twenty two, extended again to March thirty first, twenty twenty three by Governor Baker, and extended again on March thirty first, twenty two, March thirty first, twenty twenty five by Governor Hillary. You are hereby given notice that the members of the Brockton Housing Authority are called to meet in regular session on Thursday, September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four at two P M. In the Mayorville Comfort Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, forty five Barton Road, First Floor, Brockton Matt, open three oh one. This meeting slash hearing of the Brockton Housing Authorities will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend the in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if the technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The public is invited to view and or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud Meeting App in the App Store or at www.zoom.us at two P M on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. Click on and join the meeting and enter meeting ID number eight seven nine zero four five four six three six zero. Passcode eight zero two one six zero, or use the link H T T P dot double slash zoom dot U S slash I slash eight seven nine zero four five four six three six zero. You may also join by calling conference line at one six four six five five eight eight six five six at two P M on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four and enter meeting ID eight seven nine zero four five four six three six zero, passcode eight zero two one six zero, followed by the pound sign. The board chair will instruct participants on the appropriate time in May for color comics during this meeting. If we can all rise, if you can, then remove your hat. And silence your cell phones for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
And Mr. Chairman.
Here.
Item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, the annual meeting of June twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and the special meeting of August sixth, twenty twenty four. Item A, the package, Mr. Tebow.
I have reviewed the minutes and have found them to be in order, and we recommend that they be approved as written.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regal of the the regular meeting of June twenty seven, twenty twenty four, the annual meeting of June twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and the special meeting of August sixth, twenty twenty four. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
No questions.
Hearing done. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Item three, hearing of visitors. Any member of the public is invited to speak before the board. Visitors wishing to be heard must sign in with their name, address, and contact number before the start of the meeting. Each visitor will be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The board will take any additional advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for hearing of visitors will be limited to fifteen minutes, which will be strictly enforced. There will be no passing of your three minutes to another. All visitors can be heard on agenda items only. Is there any hearing of visitors?
Nobody has signed it in the room. Anybody on virtual want to speak? No one has indicated they would like to, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing done. Item four, correspondence.
There is no correspondence in this month's package.
That's easy for both. Item five, approval of the bill for the regular meeting of September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. Item B in the package. Commissioner Robert.
Uh, thank you. Okay, I have reviewed the bills for um July, August, and September, I believe, that's the table.
Correct.
And I'm
During July and August.
July and August. And I've gone over them, and there were a couple of questions that have been answered to my satisfaction, and I make a motion to accept the bills for June, July, and August.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Kraft. Motion is to approve the bills for the regular meeting of September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. As writ, any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Harris. We'll block activity with her. Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We do not have a vote from Commissioner Taylor. We can move on without it? No, no, here.
Yes, yes, I'm here, sorry.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, appointment of affordable housing, L I H T C asset manager, exhibit D in your package.
We did, we did miss number six. Ceptance of resignation.
Oh, sorry. Item six, acceptance of resignation of Tamara Jordan, Callum Mayor, rental assistant, state voucher coordinator, item C in the package, Mr. Tebow.
Um, Tamara is a fairly long-term employee. She held the position of office manager in the rental assistance office and state board, state voucher coordinator. Uh, she will be missed, but she's gone on to a another office.
Well, good for her.
We need a motion to accept with regret.
Motion to accept with regret.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to accept with regret. Ms. Collin Board has resigned from her position effective August thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
You're on mute, Taylor.
Yes, sorry, phone is sticking.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, appointment of affordable housing, L I H T C asset manager, exhibit D in your package.
I'm quite excited about this position. We've had it filled before, but we are building up our capacity in the low-income housing tax credit area, which is where we're going with the Campolo project, and I'll let Mr. Plouffe speak on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Members of the board. We advertised for this position after the board had um promoted uh, CMR Alderon Rivera to the position of asset manager two, and she's in charge now of uh, Preston Court, Hill Street, Rainbow Terrace, and Scattered, and Scattered Sites. This position is in charge of our scattered site units. So it's a, it's a difficult portfolio, but it's only about a hundred units. But when we were contemplating Campolo, we added on to the job description that you had to have low-income housing tax credit, that's the L I H T C, low-income housing tax.
Okay.
Um, experience, uh, because that's where we're going with Campolo. Ms. Fuentes had interviewed for the position of asset manager two, but the in-house candidate had won out, and um, she then applied for this position, Mr. Sheedy, Ms. Campbell, and myself interviewed her. You can see from her resume, she has nine years of affordable housing experience, moving up every time she moved from one place to another. Most recently, she was at the Cambridge Housing Authority. She has her low-income housing tax credit certification, sir, certified occupancy specialist certification. She pressed the interview committee with her maturity and calm demeanor, because sometimes the residents answer her. Hold up. Carol is a resident. She knows the one with tax credit too. So uh, the committee can recommend this one.
We need a motion and a second. Item seven.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to appoint Monica Fuentes of Hannover Math, the position of affordable housing L I H T C asset manager, effective September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, at the twenty twenty four step one rate of fifty-nine thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars per annum.
Can I make a mistake there?
I guess Monica Fuentes. This is Monica?
This is Monica. I thought this was the mayor. No, she get, she is the one who got promoted.
Okay.
CMR got promoted.
Okay.
And that's an opening which Monica is now running. Which is great news, because other woman I would have to do it.
Enough, enough, enough. Yeah.
Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner uh, Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Did, did you say me?
Yeah.
You, you said me, Tom?
Yes. Oh, I thought you said yes. I apologize.
I'm sorry, did you? I said yes, so.
Talk it all later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Monica, if I could still go on.
Sorry. Congratulations to me there. Yeah.
If I could say one thing, Mr. Plouffe just said that you uh, well, you didn't get the first position, because the in-house candidate hid, and we do like to promote them then. So, you know, the more you know, the more valuable you are.
Let me read this up. This is for all new employees, even the ones that got promoted. Let me thank you for wanting to work for the Brockton Housing Authority, one of the best jobs in Brockton, in my opinion. We own two thousand one hundred apartments in Brockton and administer over twenty-five hundred rental assistance aid soldiers, assistant aid vouchers. This is not an easy job. We, the board of commissioners and the executive team, put our residents first. They are our number one priority. Without them, we don't need me, the board, building of staff. Please remember to treat our residents with respect. We also say that anyone can have a bad day. Be a little sharp or argumentative with for no apparent reason. If this should happen to you, please smile and walk away. Don't argue. We can all strive to be a better person. If you can do this, we'll go far in this agency. I am very glad to meet you and welcome you to the team. The board meets once a month in this room on many different subjects. Please feel free to attend if one of these items interests you. Thank you for attending.
We welcome you.
Thank you. Just keep smiling.
Item A, appointment of rental assistant, state voucher coordinator, exhibit D in your package.
Before I ask Mr. Plouffe to speak on this, I'd just like to say um, about the candidate, uh, she is a special person. She has many talents. Um, she has worked on the vibrancy committee and has really uh, been a active member on that committee and responsible for a lot of things that are happening at, this has nothing to do with the job, by the way, she's a precursor. Um, she applied for a previous job when we asked for some writing samples. Her writing was um exemplary. She can articulate what she wants to say in writing and verbally. Um, again, that's important overall. I'll let Mr. Plouffe speak to the process.
Um, with the resignation of Tamara Colling Warf, our resignation, you just accepted with regret. Um, we posted internally a promotionary position in the Section Eight Department. And this position is to handle all the state vouchers that we have. We have a lot of different flavors of state vouchers. We have MRVP, which are regular state vouchers, sort of like sections even different. We have a um alternative housing voucher program, which are for non elderly, disabled, single individuals. We have project-based MRVP. We have a program with the Department of Mental Health where we have state vouchers placed in group homes. Um, so we have lots of different flavors and um about a year ago, this boy created a position in the Section Eight Department just to handle the state vouchers, because we were getting bigger and bigger with that, and it was such a specialty. And Tamara was the first one to ha- have that position, and now uh, Ms. Monahan will be the second. She was uh the only person to apply. She interviewed with the uh, director of the department, that's Bonnie, and uh, with the office manager, uh, Crystal Grera, and she did excellent in their interview. And her body of work here at the Housing Authority is, Mr. Tebow said, is exemplary. She always helps her clerk. He helps Mr. Sheedy with other above and beyond duties that are not in her job description. She handles all the postings on the website for the Asset Management Department. So she, she is the type of employee that will go far here at the Housing Authority, and I'm glad to see that she has taken this step to move on to a higher-rated position and to learn more knowledge, because she knows a lot about the Asset Management Department. Now she'll learn about the Section Eight Department. That makes her much more valuable employee to the Housing Authority and pride her own. So we have no problems in recommending her for this position.
You're from Hadley?
I'm from Brockton, but I also live in South Hadley.
So uh, can I tell?
Yes.
Where is this?
So Hadley is out by U Mass, and she lives there on the weekend, and she lives here in Brockton with her mother during the week. She lives on Mannheim Street during the week.
Okay. We need a motion and a second. Item eight.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to appoint Jennifer Monahan of Hadley Math to the position of rental assistant, state voucher coordinator, effective September thirty, twenty twenty four, at the twenty twenty four step one annual rate of fifty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
You have very interesting educational experiences, a wide variety of uh, interest themes.
That's true.
You heard the letter and read it off to her. That's the same. Don't have to read it off again. Thank you.
Jennifer has been working frontline with the residents in the public college in Soul Labs, well, third career here. It's kind of a very good job of that.
You need to pull everybody out.
I have one more thing, and then I'm done. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Item nine. Approval of twenty twenty four utility allowance schedule, item exhibit F in your package, Mr. Tebow.
If I could ask Mr. Plouffe to speak on this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Members of the board. This has to do with the Section Eight Department. Um, our voucher holders are given um, a utility allowance, an allowance for their utility. So if they uh contract rent is X number of dollars, this amount gets subtracted to how much is given to the landlord if the tenants have to pay for their own heat, their own electricity. Because when we say we're gonna pay a certain amount for rent, that's all included. So if a tenant has to pay their own, we have a schedule on how much we're gonna deduct from the landlord and send to the tenant. So uh, HUD also says, you, you pass this every year, and HUD says we have to review um the utility allowances, and if they change by more than ten percent, we have to update them. And um, they have, I have last year's here and this year's, we have the old Colling Planning Council do a survey for us. We hire them to do this. They do a survey of the electric company and the gas company and the oil companies to see how uh, how much everything costs. And so they put all that data together. They send it to us. Ms. Barney reviews it, make sure they haven't made any mistakes in their spreadsheets, and, and we uh, ask the board to pass it. It's federal regulations. We have to do this, but it's, it's the numbers that matter. Uh, last year, I can give you, for example, a single-family home, the heat, if it was gas, last year was forty-nine dollars. This year it's up to fifty-four. Oil, last year for a one-bedroom was one-twelve, now it's one-fourteen. For electric heat, last year for a one-bedroom was one-thirteen, now it's one-twenty-eight. So everything's going up, going up, and, and this just makes it fairer for our participants so that they can afford their utilities.
We need a motion and a second. Item nine.
So moved. Second.
We still need a second.
I thought, yeah.
I said second after she said so moved. I did.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve the twenty twenty four utility allowance schedule as presented, effective October one, twenty twenty four. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I will take the uh, new employees over to the press at all the times.
You're all welcome back next month, if you want to come.
Of course they do.
Item ten, approval of Brockton Housing Authority twenty twenty five annual plan and five-year capital plan, seven G in your package.
Yes, yes, yeah.
The next two items are the reason why you've got a separate package. It's uh, two plans that we must uh, uh publish to the public. The first one is state, the second one is federal. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sheedy.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. The mission is the state annual plan, it's part of the Housing Reform Act of two thousand and thirteen, and it's compiled the policies, budgets, and plans that you've approved in the past as the board, and it provides the public with public insight into the operations of the authority. And that's probably the most important line is that it provides transparency. If we're doing it on the state side, it's in this plan, and everything that we do is in there. So it provides the public an opportunity to review it and to comment on it, and I can say today, I've received no comments. As been posted, there are requirements, as Mr. Tebow said, that should be posted. I believe it's forty-five days in advance. It's in the uh, uh, the site offices and it's on the website.
We need a motion and a second. Item ten.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve the Brockton Housing Authority twenty twenty five annual plan and five-year capital plan as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item eleven. Acceptance of comment on Brockton Housing Authority's annual plan and approval of resolution twenty-four dash one, resolution approving submission of the Brockton Housing Authority's annual plan, five-year capital plan, and moving to work supplement for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, exhibit H in your package. Mr. Sheedy, can you speak on that, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is along the lines of the state annual plan. It's a little more involved. It has some civil rights certification. The mayor has to sign off on the consolidated housing plan that the Housing Authority and the city are on the same lines. Uh, the five-year annual capital plan, Mr. Barry put together is in there. He wanted a plug. I gave the tool, so. He didn't want me taking all the credit up here, so. Uh, and, and again, it, it provides transparency to the public, and there are the same requirements are required that should be posted. Uh, the public comment period for forty-five days be available, and I haven't received no comments on this one either. I tried to save you from killing a tree, but that was overalls, so.
The, um, I just want to add, the moving to work plan has been here too. The moving to work plan is very important to me to know of them, because there's a bunch of regulations, and the moving to work plan says, hey, we're not coming to go by this regulation. We're gonna look for a waiver from this. Um, and we have to let the public know about that. So, you know, something that we're doing is a, uh, doing um, security deposits in the Section Eight Department. Uh, that's different. We, we, so we're using some funds for that.
Charles, are these both the, this whole package?
They're on the website. Yeah, yeah, they are available in the offices, or you could request one in writing, and we'll be sending to you. So there are multiple ways for the public to see that.
Charles, we're saving the tree.
Yes, well, that's, that's uh, the Yes, well, that's, that's, uh, we've done it in a paperwork act.
The best committee had to lug them around, so.
Oh, yeah.
We need a motion and a second, item eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Taylor, you were there on time. Motion was made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash one. Resolution approving the submission of Brockton Housing Authority annual plan, five-year capital plan, and moving to work supplement for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I do have, I'm going to require a signature, but I'll get it after the.
Does, uh, Luna have it? Does Luna have it? Okay.
I did sign a ton of things, but Luna already signed it already. Item twelve, award of contract, low-flow toilet replacement, Bel Air Heights, project twenty-four dash two, exhibit I in your package.
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this, please?
Good afternoon, Board members. On August seventh, two thousand twenty-four, capital improvement solicited bid from plumbing contractors, the Public Management Project. Then on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, the bids were electronic. They opened and six bids were received, with bids ranging from sixty-eight thousand to one hundred and ninety-eight thousand. After review of the bids and references on for buyers, uh, in Sun Mechanical LLC, a three-herring's weight marble head mask, apparent low bidder, with a bid amount of sixty-eight thousand, there is the responsive and responsive. We would recommend to approve and award a contract to buyers in Sun Mechanical LLC of three Henry's, Henry's Way Marble Head Mask for the low-flow toilet replacement project at twenty-four-two Bel Air Heights in a month of sixty-eight thousand.
We need a motion and a second, item twelve.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion is for water contract in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars to the Buyers and Suns Mechanical LLC of Marble Head Mask for the low-flow toilet replacement project at Bel Air Heights, project twenty-four dash two. I just wanted to add that it's the low bid. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
There's such variation in the bids and, and nobody local.
That's, um, oftentimes you have someone throw away a bid at it. The hundred ninety-eight, we would never, uh, uh, went with that, even if it was a low one. It's well, why they put the price in, I don't know. Maybe they misunderstood the job.
They're going to have trouble with.
Yeah, so, uh, we told them what kind of toilet they were getting, so.
Item thirteen. Approval of change order number one, second-floor balcony repairs, Rainbow Terrace, project six eleven dash one A, exhibit J in your package.
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this, please?
Change, this change order changed mainly two, 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 two line items, um, at, uh, Rainbow Terrace. Uh, one was where we had a, uh, basically lower the steel structures that we're putting in because of the, the out-of-level balconies. Um, and we, uh, happened then to fill it with a grout to, to get a full contact on it. So the other, um, was additional non-structural repairs to concrete planks. Um, this project was an emergency project in two thousand seventeen. And since that time, it has basically been deteriorating, well, and that's why we haven't seen a lot of money on it. So, uh, after review of MCI's contract incorporated change order proposal in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six fourteen for this work, capital improvements and the architect, the authority engineer, the construction advisor for EOHLC, deemed it to be, uh, reasonable and in the industry standard. We would make, uh, a recommendation to accept change order number one in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and fourteen cents and a twenty-day non, no-cost time extension for MCI contracting of twelve ninety-six Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. For the six-six-seven-one-A Rainbow Terrace second floor balcony repair project.
We need a motion and a second, item thirteen.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
A motion has been made. Motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion is to accept change order number one in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and fourteen cents and a twenty-day no-cost time extension for MCI Contracting Incorporated of twelve ninety-six Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. For the six-six-seven dash one A Rainbow Terrace second floor balcony repairs project. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item fourteen. Approval of change order number two, second-floor balcony repairs, Rainbow Terrace, project six-six-seven dash one A, exhibit K in your package.
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak.
Change order two for the balcony is, contains, um, three change order proposal. Uh, one is, uh, a, is for a hundred and fifty-seven day no-cost time extension for work described in two of the, uh, change order proposals. Uh, the second one is additional rental costs for the shore and equipment due to the additional work associated with see, uh, change order proposal number eleven. And that was in the dollar amount of sixty-four thou, uh, sixty-four hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents. Change order for four eleven was for the removal and replacement of three structural concrete planks and the associated work with it and a hundred and seventy-three day, uh, no-cost time extension. Um, after review of MCI contractors' change order proposal in the amount of fifty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars sixty-four cents and a three hundred and thirty day no-cost time extension for this work. Capital improvements, the authorities in there and construction advisor for EOHLC deemed to be reasonable and, and industry standard. We would recommend to accept change order number two in the amount of fifty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars sixty-four cents and a hundred and thirty, three, hundred and thirty day no-cost time extension from MCI Contracting Incorporated of twelve ninety-six Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. For the six-six-seven-one-A Rainbow Terrace second floor balcony repair project.
One question. I have my three hundred and thirty day extension.
Yep.
No, you said one sixty-seven.
There was, uh, one fifty-seven was from, um, CO, um, oh, eight. And, uh, one seventy-three was for a COP eleven. They add those together, which should have three hundred and thirty.
Okay. We need a motion and a second, item fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to accept change order number two in the amount of fifty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-four cents and a three hundred and thirty day no-cost time extension for MCI Contracting Incorporated of twelve ninety-six Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. For the six-six-seven dash one A Rainbow Terrace second floor balcony repair project. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item fifteen. Approval of change order number three, electric heating upgrades, Bel Air Tower, project twenty-four dash ten, exhibit L in your package, people?
Uh, before I ask Mr. Barry to speak on this, the last, uh, change order you went through, it's, it's almost regular way of business for the state. It, it, they don't address it holistically, and it happens. On the federal side, which Mr. Barry has more control over, uh, usually the change orders are smaller, um, and oftentimes in our favor. This is a little bit different. Bell Air High Rise, uh, we had two fires due to the heaters. So we did an emergency government, emergency started installing it. So we didn't have all the time to plan and see exactly what the issue was. We wanted to get the bad heaters out before another fire was started. As Mr. Barry, that was done under, uh, maintenance. Mr. Barry came into it. He started to do the, uh, technical engineering and, and, uh, review of the project and found that, you know, things, the original scope wasn't what it is. That's why you're seeing a third change order at this time, Mr. Barry.
Was there much damage?
No, there was not. Uh, in each one, they, uh, the, there was smoke and, uh, but it was, we were told by the fire department, these things are deficient. They're going to continue to catch on fire, um, and obviously, uh, we had to make a decision quickly to do something.
Um, again, the, as Mr. Tebow said, this was, um, ongoing issue over there. Uh, as we got into it, it became a much bigger project for us. Um, we did come back. Uh, we're here previously in January. Uh, that, that change order we put before you back then included purchase only of a hundred and seventy, like, uh, double-pole, um, thermosets to control two, two heat, you know, to the living room and the bedroom. And change order number two covered the installation of an additional one hundred and forty-two, two thousand watt unit heaters. Whether it was, um, due to, um, the condition and or replacement heating that exceeded two thousand watts. We were running it problematically where we had two advantage on a lot of the breakers. And a lot of them coming in were three or four thousand watt heaters that was overloaded or certain. So we had to take them out whether they're newer or not, replace them as well. Um, this change order here, change order three would cover the replacement of the hundred and seven, I'm sorry, replacement of seventy-three additional unit heaters, which completes the replacement of all unit heaters over there now. And the installation of a hundred and sixty of the double-pole thermosets that we had purchased in the last, um, change order. We had only purchased the thermostat back then, so we had to wait for it to come in. Um, the, uh, so, so a hundred and sixty double-pole, uh, thermosets and nineteen, um, resistant baseboard heat thermosets. All those of, those nineteen were ones in the hallways, uh, or stairwells. They're regular electric caseboard that has thermosets. Um, we would recommend to award a change order number three to Hub Electric of Ten Draper Street, Unit Nineteen, Moving Mass in the amount of eighty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, fifty-five cents with a no-cost ninety-five day calendar day time extension at twenty-four-ten Bel Air High Rise Electric Heating Upgrade Project.
One question, Brad. Is that complete now? If all, all units have been done?
We have replaced all of the units. Uh, we are still, um, verifying loads and stuff like that, um, making sure it's all balanced out. Um, which takes a substantial amount of fully covers all permanent heat on the units, um, finding all the different, uh, making sure that all the, all of the hybrider are on. So we can find out what the water is actually drawn.
So it could be more at a later date?
At, at a later date. It would not be with this contract. We'll, we'll be closed with this contract.
Okay.
So who was at fault or what was at fault?
Um, the difference between the manufacturing of unit heaters from nineteen seventy to the two thousand and twenty. The, the most popular material used then was far superior than what we are using now. So a lot of the units we're dealing with, um, uh, the newer ones, um, because they're not built as well.
Wow.
The older ones are obviously, they're, they're well past their life expectancy. At, we're at, what, fifty years? Um, and they're not, they're not, they're not designed to go fifty.
So at fifty years old, they started to fail, and that failure was that they were overheating and starting fires. We put the new ones on, just like think about buying a new refrigerator today versus nineteen seventy. They weigh half as much. They don't last as long. They don't have the same things in there, so there were some issues with that. Uh, but Mr. Barry, it, this was not, this was a puzzle. Uh, that when you fix one thing, it broke another thing. And so i- it's taken quite a bit of, um, uh, him and engineers to, uh, come together and figure out how to get this done. And I have to give them a lot of credit. They've worked.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
We need a motion and a second, item fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trapp, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is for what? Change order number three to Hub Electric Incorporated of Ten Draper Street, Draper Street, Unit Nineteen, Moving Mass, in the amount of eighty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents with a no-cost ninety-five calendar day time extension at twenty-four dash ten Bel Air High Rise Electric Heating Upgrade Project. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item sixteen. Approval of certificate of completion consolidated and certificate of release, electric heating upgrades, Bel Air Tower, project twenty-four dash ten, exhibit M in your package.
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this.
And, uh, capital improvements is themed Hub Electric Incorporated of Ten Draper Street, Unit Fourteen, I'm sorry, Unit Nineteen, Moving Mass, complete as of March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four for the twenty-four dash ten Bel Air High Rise Electric Heating Upgrade Project as per specification. Capital improvements has also confirmed that the construction meets all applicable codes and the Hub Electric has completed their monthly title. We would recommend to approve this certificate of completion consolidated and the certificate of release as of March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four from Hub Electric Incorporated, Ten Draper Street, Unit Nineteen, Moving Mass, for the Hub Electric Project.
We need a motion and a second, item sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion is to approve certificate of completion consolidated and certificate of release as of March twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-four to the contract with Hub Electric Incorporated of Moving Mass for the electric heating upgrade at Bel Air Tower, project twenty-four dash ten. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Sorry. I'm seeing a handle. Did we do the roll call yet?
We did not do the roll call.
Anybody have any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seventeen, review of financial comparative, exhibit M in your package.
If I could ask Mr. Tebow to speak on this, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
So the financial statement that you have in front of you, uh, cover the first.
So the financial statement that you have in front of you cover the first seven months of our fiscal year. Programs are operating somewhat close to what we had expected with the exception of the state program. So we continue to monitor that, but if you have any questions, I'll be, we're gonna happy to answer them.
I'd like to just add on two things. One is our legal expenses are exceptionally high. If you remember, they closed the courts for three years and now we're back to court and we have a big backlog. And the, as far as the state goes, I had a meeting today, this morning, at which the undersecretary attended, Ben Stone. I spoke to him, I gave a very specific numbers on what it's costing us to turn our units over. That's where we're, we're, they're extremely expensive to turn over. Obviously, they're much needed and so they're working on a program to reimburse housing authorities for these excessive costs of vacancy turnovers, which will be a great help to us.
Just one question, I mean, you're in the eleven thousand dollars, is that it?
Yeah, that's, that's holding, the section eight program is holding some response, so.
It will eventually show up.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's perfectly fine because that program, we're supposed to use up the reserves prior years, so.
It's, so it's a, it's a program they gave, came out during COVID and they said, here's thirty-one vouchers. You can issue them and when the first person leaves, you'll have thirty and the second person leaves, you'll have twenty-nine, you'll never have them ever again. So now, so we built up a little reserve and now they're saying, well, we might take it if you don't use it. So we're using it. What?
We need a motion and a second, item seventeen.
So moved?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to accept the financial comparatives for the period ending July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four and put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. People?
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item eighteen, executive director report, exhibit O in your package.
I'd like to touch upon a couple of things and answer any questions that you have. One is, just real quick, we will be asking for a special meeting. We do have a person for a position open that we did not have the decision before we could meet the forty-eight hour notice for this meeting. So I will be asking, I'll put something out to the board for a date. It may be that the meeting will probably be run by Mr. Pluff. I am going on vacation again, Mr. Chairman.
Why should I take you?
Again.
Again, I'll be going, next Wednesday I'll be leaving, it's a Wednesday to Wednesday trip.
Enjoy.
So I will, but I did want to let you know that. Just a couple of things, today is, hopefully, when we look back at historic day and the history of the housing authority, we have been working furiously, everybody in this room on a, and the people in Cambridge, people in Cambridge especially, on an application to the executive office of housing and livable communities for the funding of the Campello Phase One project. It is a significant, significant application. We were asked to come in and apply, it's a high readiness, it's a special application. I want to thank Senator Brady, who really did a lot working with the secretary. The meeting that we had here in April was in part because of him. And want to thank you, Commissioner Roberts, for the work you've done, working with them. Nothing is guaranteed, by the way. If we do not, if we're not successful here, we'll apply again in November for the winter session. They also, the mayor, I attached a letter from Senator Brady supporting this. We also got a letter from the mayor, but this was sent out beforehand, that where he's pledging a million dollars in home funds to the project and it's part of the application also. So again, today, hopefully, is a big day. It is being all tallied up. In fact, Mr. Pluff is probably looking at some texts now, stuff coming in, asking us, you know, what's the loan on the lien for the deep bank north? What's the REO, you know, there's just, by the way, a lot of the questions come in and I say, what are you asking me?
Yeah.
And so it takes a little bit of while to do that. So that, that's, that's going well. Tomorrow morning, we'll have our second leadership meeting. We had started these back in two thousand and fifteen, but that's a place where we get together all the directors and, you know, it's for the the growth of our organization. The, the operations of a housing authority today are much, much, much different than when I started thirty-four years ago. And it takes many more capacities to do it. HUD will be out on October sixteenth inspecting Hillside Village, Roosevelt Heights and Crescent Port. Si Amara has had the position for what, a month? She, she manages all of them, but if you don't see Amara. So, but gee, they'll be out, I feel will do well. And just one other thing I'll touch upon, School on Wheels will be starting tutoring at Hillside Village.
Oh, great.
September thirty.
They haven't started yet, we're close, though, it should be within the next ten days that we start.
So that's exciting. Yeah, as you, as you know, kids, they keep saying that the kids have really not recovered from COVID. You know, I, I don't pretend to understand the complexities of that. But anything we can do to prepare the kids to be ready for school and help them with their homework and whatever it is.
Great.
That's it.
Can I just ask, Tom, what's the grant of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to mass housing for the demolition of thirteen sixty-two Main Street?
So we applied for a grant to tear down the South Health Building.
Yeah. Oh.
That's thirteen sixty-two. So thirteen eighty Main Street right now is the address for those buildings at the end and Mr. Pluff has suggested this and I agree. The new building will be thirteen sixty-two, thirteen seventy-two and thirteen eighty, so they have three unique addresses. The people in the B building especially have been, you know, things just get dropped off in the A building that go to thirteen eighty Main Street. That will be found again.
Wow, true.
About the audit? I did not, do you have the audit report?
No, I'm just gonna read it off then, just here.
Thank you.
Our auditors visited the housing authority the week of June twenty-fourth. Mr. Pacers and his staff did a great job working with them to get a, the audit completed in a timely fashion. I am happy to report that there were no findings. I would especially like to recognize the finance department staff who worked so hard in this period when we did not have a CFO to ensure that the trains kept running on time. This was not an easy feat. A copy of the audit is in your board package this month. Just wanted to congratulate Mr. Pacers.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome back.
Thanks.
I'm gonna take a little credit away from Mr. Pacers on this. I give him a lot, but this was a period before he came. Now, he worked with them, made sure it was there. But the staff, I'm talking about Katrina Lim, Allison, Karen and Tanya, they were running around, just trying to keep things going. That said, I'm so glad to have you back, Michael.
Yeah, I thought I was telling you. No, it's a lot of people working behind the scenes.
We need a motion and a second, item eighteen.
So moved?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion is to accept the executive director's report for September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four and put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
How come Sullivan Towers gets all the movies?
They're trying to finish the, the beginning of it to see how it will go. And so they, yeah.
Because of the woman you just promoted, worked at Sullivan Towers and she's very active with the asset manager in the vibrancy committee and they, they're the ones that come up with these ideas and.
Wonderful, so we did a good job, we promoted the right person.
Yeah, no, it is, but it is, we will, we will be hopefully doing them outside at family development at some time in the future.
And where did we get the screen?
We bought it, it's fairly low, fairly inexpensive.
And a popcorn machine.
And a popcorn machine.
Oh.
Wow.
Wow. And will we be sharing screens when we move to other locations or?
Yes.
Or, or will each place have their own screen?
No, no, we'll move everything. We, we have one set of equipment and we'll move it to where it needs to go.
I see.
When are you going to Catherine?
Does Carol get to pick the movies?
No.
They, they picked the movie by a survey of the residents.
Right. Oh.
And that's how they picked the movie. And there was a tie and I think they flipped a coin.
Yeah.
That's the only way to do it.
Any other questions, item eighteen? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. People?
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item nineteen, approval of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four state operating budget revision one, program four hundred dash one, exhibit C in your package.
If I could ask, if the Patriots, please?
So, at this time of the year, we take a look at, you know, where our spending is and how it affects the budget and what the budget looks like. So we had come up with these changes to our budget for the state program, increasing our subsidy line items as well as our rental income line items due to more money that's anticipated to be coming in. Again, you know, we spoke about legal, legal costs have gone up substantially over the past year, so we wanted to supplement that budget as well. And then, of course, there's other items, maintenance, election losses, which again is kind of related to the legal. And then there were some extraordinary costs that we didn't anticipate when building the two thousand and twenty-four budget. Which brings it all about the, somewhat, yeah, yeah, well, yeah. But you never know, you know, a boiler goes in November or something.
So if, if I can address that, if you look at, we have nineteen million dollars in funds in our federal programs and other affordable housing programs that we can use if something goes wrong. We have nothing at our state program. We're managing it the same way. So the law says that we charge our residents thirty percent of what their income is and the difference between what they pay and what it costs to run, the state pays for it. The state is never paying for it. Now, I don't want to put the state in that bad an eye because we're the only state that doesn't. But they do not fund it adequately. So therefore, when we go and we do a, a turnover, the unit's fifty years old, it's never been touched. And where it's costing us ten, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars to get that one bedroom unit ready to go. Don't even talk about while the turn, while the turn are twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. So the state program is different. They know it's different. And they're trying to address it. And I have to give Governor Haley a lot of credit and her, they've recognized and said, we need to do something about this. Our state housing will not be here in twenty years. It'll be there, it'll just be torn down and something else.
And we're the only state?
We are the only state. Hawaii might do a little bit of something, Connecticut used to, they got out of it, but no. The majority of the states, the rest of them don't do anything.
But Governor Haley wants to keep it, keep the system as it is, but improve it?
Improve it and fund it, she wants to fund it. She sees it as an asset and understands that it is, you know, which she saw, the units going offline throughout the state. If you remember, at one time, they had to make a decision, well, Commissioner Sullivan would remember, whether they wanted to close down Roosevelt Heights or not. And it was at the last second and because of Senator Feeden at the time, his intervention, that we did not tear it down. Paul River tore one down and I believe Lowell tore one down.
We need a motion and a second, item nineteen.
So moved?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trapp, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve revision number one to the state operating budget for stated housing for the Bronx and Housing Authority's program number four hundred dash one for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, showing total revenue of three million, three hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and a total and total expenses of three million, six twenty-seven, three twenty-six, thereby requesting a subsidy of one million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars to be submitted to the executive office of housing and livable communities for its review and approval. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. People?
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Should we be advocating for this as a board? Should we be saying that we think this should be improved? I mean, not to get rid of it, but to improve and give it more money? Is that anything we do in our role?
Yes, it is. And, and you have, I know that, your role would be if there was a local counselor or a local representative who was against housing, you would want to admit some that it was an asset. By the way, many communities have local people who are against public housing. We do not. And the, the reason it's not as important, and I shouldn't say it's not as important, not as prevalent, because you have such support. Representative Cassidy, Dubois, Mendez, one hundred percent, Senator Brady, one hundred ten percent. So we do have great support from our legislative delegation, you know, in the state.
Should we add to that support or is that something we don't really need to worry about?
You don't need to, you are doing it. I mean, you've signed things on a regular basis, supporting it, your plans are supporting it. So if there came a time, and there was a time, I, I, was that prior to you being head commissioner Sullivan? It was Commissioner Barazo, who we went into the state house with. The state was talking about tearing down Roosevelt Heights and we met in there and advocated for that. At the time, the mayor could have went either way on that.
I came just when it was being reviewed.
So it was, yeah. So we, we do have the support, you have the governor's support now, you have the, the secretary of the executive office of housing and livable communities at Augusta, who's supporting us. You have Mass Union, which Carol belongs to, who's supporting us.
Thank you, Carol.
Board who's supporting us.
Okay, so we don't really need to take any action ourselves?
We, yes, if there's specific issues that we, we think we need, we will, we will ask, I assure you.
Good.
Item twenty, approval of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four operating budget revision number one, federal housing program AMP one, federal housing program AMP two, section eight, housing choice voucher program, central office cost controlled and affordable housing program, exhibit Q in your package.
If I could ask Mr. Pacers to speak on this, please? Thank you. So basically, these are the federal projects that we're adjusting the budgets on. Again, there's changes to the maintenance budgets as well as the week budgets as well. There's some administrative line items that we're changing, but other than that, that's.
We're, we're in good shape on all these programs. This is sort of a cleanup at this time of year.
We need a motion and a second, item twenty.
So moved?
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion is to approve resolution twenty four dash two, resolution approving fiscal year two thousand and twenty four federal operating budget revision. Number one, project MA zero two four dash zero zero one dash fourteen D. Asset management project, project AMP one as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? We, we have five motions in the one.
No, you couldn't, so on the federal side, you could one motion to approve all of them. If it was four different, if it was the state and we had four different ones, you'd have to do four different motions, that, that this is finally it is.
I got four here.
The state makes everything more complicated, it seems.
I got five.
Okay, so that was the way it was written up, it doesn't actually need to be done that way on the, on the federal side. Can we make a motion to take all, all five items as one item?
Yes, we can. Everybody agreeable to that, we're taking all five items as one?
Yes.
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 You, Carol?
Yes.
So we have. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? We have a motion made by Taylor Harris and seconded by Janet Trapp. Harry, none? Roll call, Mr. People?
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty one, old business. Any old business? Harry, none? Item twenty two, new business. Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please.
Yes.
Thank you, one, tomorrow we have our meeting, we do have our holiday party scheduled for December. You know the December date, but we'll be sending something out, obviously, the board members are invited to that, it'll be a nice time. We, this year, we're doing it at Thorny League.
Really? Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's very, it's, well, it is, but it is also very reasonable. The second part goes against that, what I just told you, one hundred percent, we're very worried about the next, the coming years. As far as the budget goes, or housing, there's a housing crisis. And so on the federal side, and again, this is math to truth, if we have great support. And then there's a budget crisis, thirty one trillion dollars in debt. And those are fighting against each other. So we will do everything we can, but, and, and this is something I'm telling our directors, we, we should be prepared to really tighten our belts and bases. The Campello project, we can get that done, greatly relieves us, brings in a lot more money. We have a brand new building, so that it's not something that's falling down, sucking up a lot of money right, you know, right now. So, I just, and I will continue to surprise you of what we're seeing. What happens in December with the president really doesn't matter. So, I'm sorry to say, because it'll be Congress, if, if the Democrat wins and the Congress goes Republican, nothing will get done. Nothing will go across her desk. We don't know what President Trump will do, last time we thought he'd cut a lot, and he didn't. So we don't know, it doesn't mean a lot of that, but what, what the House of Representatives and the Senate does.
Just a reminder for everybody, Tom is going to email us on a special meeting, he did a ten minute meeting. And the reason is, they need a forty eight hour notice to post it. So, the earliest it can be now is Monday?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
If it could be in the morning, that would be great, I, I will be with the client after one o'clock.
Excellent, so what I will do is send something out, Commissioner Harris, into everybody and look for a common time.
Okay, thanks.
What's your best time, Taylor?
Does it have to be Tuesday, or could it be Wednesday?
It could be Wednesday, it could be Thursday, it could be Friday.
Is there any reason that we have to move real, real quick?
Yes.
Can I hit to that?
Yes. Yes.
Hiring is very, very difficult. And we have lost a number of good candidates because we have to wait a month, and they're out of work and they go somewhere else.
Yeah.
I, I found another job, sorry. And you've seen it, we've had people not take the job even after they've come to the board, so it, it happens.
So we need to do it Tuesday, Tuesday.
No, no, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday would be fine, too.
Oh, oh, I see, I thought you meant.
The October board meeting is.
Oh, no, no, I just meant, other than Tuesday, if, if Tuesday, Tuesday's a little tough for me, too, but, but.
Yeah, if, if it has to be Tuesday, I'm free from nine to.
It does have to be Tuesday, how about, so would Wednesday be better for you, Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
What about you, Commissioner Harris?
Yep, I can do that.
What time, Taylor?
Anytime after one.
Anytime after one on Wednesday.
Any time with you, Janet?
No, the F, whatever Taylor can do, that's fine, yeah.
After one, Carol?
I'm fine.
Yeah, it can be completely zoned if you want, we'll have someone answer, is that all right, your commission?
All coming.
Okay. We'll shoot for Wednesday at two o'clock then.
Taylor?
Sounds good.
Only going to be a ten minute meeting?
That's fine. Yep. I'm open.
Two o'clock in the afternoon.
It's two o'clock in the afternoon now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty three, need a motion to adjourn? By anybody, in a second?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trapp, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to adjourn. Any discussion or questions on the motion?
No.
Roll call, Mr. People?
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.